A call to order, the February 2nd, 2021, Board, Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand if you are able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. We are continuing to meet via Zoom or provide public access via Zoom per code section 21.8.1 due to the ongoing pandemic and limiting the number of individuals within our public meeting room. With that, I will move or ask for a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Heavens, aye. Updates on COVID-19, are there any updates from staff? No updates. Supervisors, I did take a look, I saw that there are, I had the numbers from yesterday, sorry, I don't have them in front of me right now, but the today's statewide totals are 320, 339 total positive cases and 4,919 deaths statewide. Story County has a total of 9,042 positive cases and 40 deaths total. If anyone else has any additional information as well. With that, I will move on to public comment number one. This comment period is open for the public to address topics on today's agenda. We'll open that. If you have a comment to make, please raise your hand in the chat area and we'll call on you or star nine, I always want to say star six, star nine. Looks like there's somebody who'd like to make a public comment.
Hello, this is Susan Erem at the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust.
On the agenda. Okay, Susan, did you want to make a comment on something else on the agenda or did you want to speak on the topic because you are on our agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sometimes I'm put into the public comment. All right, I can wait.
We'll get to you in a few minutes then.
Great.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make any public comment? Lee, I'm seeing anything? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment number one. We'll move on to discussion and consideration of items brought before the board with requests for immediate action. I do not believe that there are any. So then next we will go on to agency reports and I believe we have Elizabeth Minor. Elizabeth, it may take just a minute for you to be put in as a panelist to be able to speak. Okay, we've got your report that we've reviewed. If you'd like to provide us some additional information, that would be great. Thanks for being here this morning.
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to kind of briefly go over our year. So it's been an exciting year for everyone, but in childcare, it's been kind of uniquely arduous. So we still use all of our asset funding for our sliding fee scale. Last year, we were closed from March to June and reopened in June after we were able to kind of understand what COVID looked like and how to open up safely and have been open ever since. We also flexed to be able to offer full day programming for school age children and had up to 72 children at a time here at the main center. We, even though we have lower enrollment this year, typically having about 450 children, now we only serve about 250 in this year, we are still using the same quantity of sliding fee scale fees. So we are having a higher need for families. So typically in, in our average utilization, families would kind of fall in a level B, which would be kind of a medium category of support for tuition. But now we're seeing that significantly more, about 57% increase of our families are needing that higher level tuition, the highest level based on last year. So we are still utilizing all of our funds allotted by asset for sliding fee scale even with the reduced enrollment. One of the biggest things, and I know I touched on already, is that we were able to flex our school age program. That has been really helpful for a lot of our families. The school district here kind of flexed in and out of a bunch of different models and kind of, as everyone knows, made decisions at the, at the last minute. And so I know that our teachers, I am very proud of all the work that they put in because managing, you know, up to 12 children in a classroom with virtual meetings throughout the day has, was a feat on its own. They were superheroes. Now that the children are back in school, we are still operating our before and after school program in each of the elementaries here in Ames and have been able to enroll more children here at the main center in our preschool and toddler programs. So right now, we actually do not have a waitlist for the first time in memorable, in memorable history, but we are enrolling more and more children. We do have a waitlist for fall and summer as families kind of just continue to push back their start date. The variant in COVID has a lot of families kind of hesitating to start, but we have seen this month at least quite a few more families wishing to enroll their twos, threes, and fours. We had six new starts this week, which is pretty big for, for these days and are looking to kind of continue to grow the program as, as families feel safe to bring their children back. And then kind of the last thing is that we are waiting for our call on the vaccine. We have been notified by our county nurse that we are first on the docket and we have about 40 staff who are ready for that call. So that is, that's where we're at right now for this year.
Thank you. Supervisors, any questions?
I just have one question, since you brought up the vaccine, have all of your workers decided to get the vaccine?
We do not, not all of our staff have decided. So I sent out the, the call to about 65 of our staff and that's full and part time at all of our different sites. And at this time, only about 40 of them have signed up.
Thank you. That was going to be my only question. Elizabeth, I just have just one question for you and I appreciate your report and the, how the pandemic has impacted you. I'm just wondering, did you have any challenges when the derecho went through as well? I didn't see that referenced in your report at all.
So we actually did not. We lost a panel of our fencing in the back, but we're able to make some quick repairs to that. But otherwise, we lost a couple of branches. We were very fortunate that none of our property and obviously all of our people stayed safe in that instance.
Great, I'm glad you had minimal, minimal damage to that. So well, thank you very much for your report this morning. It's greatly appreciated and appreciate all that you're doing for the children and families.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we will move on to, now we have Susan for the Iowa Landowners Guide to Sustainable Food Crops book survey from the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust presentation.
Hello, everyone. I'm not used to doing Zoom without video. So I believe that you've received a PDF of our presentation, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, so I just want to introduce myself and Silt for a moment. We're visiting with Boards of Supervisors around the state to explain what our Landowners' Guide is, but we, because we hope that you will let landowners know that this is available as a resource. But first of all, I would like to explain what Silt is. The Sustainable Iowa Land Trust is a statewide land trust started six years ago that's dedicated solely to protecting land to grow healthy food, table food, in perpetuity. So far, just in donated land and conservation easements, we have over 100, 1,140 acres and about $3.4 million in assets. And so we're working hard to get the word out to folks like you and the people you know because these landowners can be hard to find. We need folks who are excited about the notion of leaving a legacy of clean, healthy table food production to Iowa to help diversify our agriculture and to feed our people because Iowa currently imports nearly 90% of our food. In the days of COVID, we've seen how fragile our food system can be and we believe that local food farms that contribute to cleaner water and cleaner air and healthier soils will help build in some resilience for our communities while providing new jobs and opportunities in more rural areas for our young people. So we're introducing this Landowners' Guide to Sustainable Food Crops as a way to remind people who own small parcels of land or large ones that it is possible to grow table food here in Iowa. Historically, there was a time when Iowa farms averaged 34 crops and now we're down to about two. So we're eager for those landowners who are interested in, in what crops are possible on Iowa soils and in our climate to investigate this possibility. And this book is free, thanks to the Sustainable Ag Research and Education Program at the USDA. And we put it together over the last year with advice from farmers around the state. So the book is available in print and also online and it's broken into these simple sections. And we, and this is an example, the next page where we highlight persimmons is an example of what a page looks like. And we can send a copy of this book to each of the supervisors if you like and to anyone that you would like to distribute it to. We have plenty and that's why we printed them. So this is an example on the page that is about persimmons, of a photo, a brief description, and a relative capital and labor cost based on other food crops and the considerations that went into that, those numbers. And then we also include a cream of the crop resources on that page, but more resources at the back of the book. And at the bottom, you'll see a little diagram that shows where in a multi-story, multi-crop system, this particular crop would land. Because we know a lot of these fruits and berries and nuts and vegetables, not everyone's familiar with how they grow anymore and where they might fit into a system. On the next page, we have another example of what of honey berries, which a lot of people haven't heard about, but they're actually quite good. I grow 150 of these and they're kind of a blueberry raspberry mix of a flavor and they are acclimated to our soils. So they don't require any soil amendments like blueberries do for Iowa soils. And they are pretty cold hardy. They really grow well up in Canada and Northern Japan. They're very popular and they make good money off of tourists and a whole industry of what they call Haskap. Then we also have on the next page, you may see landowner profiles. We use one landowner profile in each section so people can see that there are actually people out there in Iowa who are growing this stuff and doing well and, and what their story was, how they started out. Most people who grow these kinds of crops don't start out with a family that grows them and inheriting the, the knowledge at this point. We've kind of let it slip over the last 50 to 70 years. And that, by the way, between Tom and Kathy there in the photo, if you're on that page, is what a chestnut looks like when it's on the tree. That's a burr. And when it drops, and that's the nice thing, chestnut trees harvest themselves. When it drops, it cracks open and the chestnut is inside. And by the way, chestnuts are very popular with Eastern Europeans, a lot of new Americans here in Iowa actually, and are a very versatile crop. Tom and Kathy make an average of $7,000 an acre off of their chestnut crop and the, and it's a you pick operation. So they don't even have to pay a lot for labor. In fact, people pay them, which is pretty cool. And then in the back is examples of some of the resources we have. And then in the PDF, I indicate to you where you can find the shareable interactive version that we invested in. So it would be easy to get around on the web and you could share it with people you know. They can decide to download the PDF if they like, just keep it on the web or request a free print copy if they like. It's a 52-page book. And then we just ask you to let us know if you'd like a copy or if you know rural landowners who might be interested in the guide or a free consultation, thanks to your tax dollars. We have an NRCS grant to create this position of farm specialist who will walk property and talk to landowners about what their interests are and then provide a report showing them what, a list of table food crops, farmers and USDA call those specialty crops, but we also include managed livestock, want to grow on that land based on soils, slopes, aspects, and the landowners' interests. And then of course, we, our value add to all of this is that we talk to landowners about the, about preserving their farm in perpetuity for that purpose. You may know from Ames, Dave Swinson, who used to be on our board, his research shows that we can feed nearly 200 people per acre per year, the minimum daily requirement for their fruits and vegetables. And currently, his back of the envelope numbers on what we're growing now and what we're feeding is 37 people per year per acre, the amount of pork that they eat. So I think there's room on Iowa's landscape for all of this kind of agriculture and the more room we make, the more diverse we are and the more resilient our agriculture and our, and our state will be. So that's what we have for, for this presentation and we'd love to take questions, either about Silt or about the book. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Supervisors, question?
Yeah, Susan, this is Linda Merkin and I did have one of your books at one point, but I can't find it. I'm wondering if you'd be willing to send us about a dozen or so because I can think of some county offices that could, if they had a few on hand, that's planning and development because they deal with the unincorporated areas and, you know, we've got a lot of people who are moving out in the country and have fairly large lots and I think that would be something we could offer to them. You know, because some of them might say, oh, yeah, I've got more land now, maybe I can, I can put in some crops, you know, that don't take a lot of room. So if you'd send us about a dozen, I'd make sure they get some and maybe a couple other county employees who deal with folks that are living or moving to the rural areas.
That's wonderful. That's exactly what we would love to do. We'll, we'll get them to you immediately.
We could also, if you gave us another 16 or so, next time we have township trustees in, we could maybe give one to each of those people.
Yep.
So that just got us up to 30.
I think it's a question. I have just for clarity and that might be an Alyssa question. Does that, even though the booklets are free, does it impact the $3 limit?
Township trustees or elected officials?
That's the only, that's the only question that I don't, I'm unclear on if.
The ones going to the public, there's no concern. It would be the last one, any elected officials, I don't know.
What would you say the fair market value is of your, of one of your books? What's it cost you to publish it?
I actually couldn't tell you that. I mean, I can tell you what it costs to publish it, but we had a fair amount of in-kind labor on this grant. What I can tell you is we're not making a gift necessarily to you supervisors as we are asking you to distribute them to the public, if that matters.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Yep, we can do that then. Supervisor Faisal, do you have any question?
Yeah, one question. Do you, the free consultant for the farm specialist, do you ever talk to, or have you considered talking to people who live in town about like edible landscaping? Has that ever been part of the conversation or would you be willing to if there were people who were interested?
I would recommend, actually, we try to stick to rural lands because this, this is a rural lands project, but I would refer people to Backyard Abundance in Iowa City, a nonprofit that works with edible landscapes in urban areas. They're very generous, they're a nonprofit and they're very generous with their expertise and their time. And that would be the most appropriate for rural, or for urban landscapes.
Thank you.
But this book, of course, would still be useful for those landowners and we'd be glad to share the book with them, but we wouldn't be able to expend our personnel time to that.
Great, well, thank you for your presentation today and the information that, that you've provided.
Thank you so much. I look forward to hearing from folks who see the, who get the book. We will be sending surveys to anyone we know who actually receives it and asking them to, to fill out a survey so we can do projects like this in the future. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving, Susan. Moving on in the agenda, next we have discussion and consideration of a funding request for Ames Indoor Aquatic Center for $1 million. Dan Colhane, I believe, is on. I was trying to see if Dan's on. I thought I just saw him.
Who opened up the panelists and disappeared.
Oh, there he is.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
Okay, sorry, I must have had a poor connection there. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yep.
Most recurring expression other than, I think you're still muted, right? Thank you for your time today, supervisors. Dan Colhane with Ames Chamber of Commerce. I'm really here on behalf of the Ames community this morning and the city of Ames and a very unique project that I did provide you an outline on prior to your meeting. It's well documented, the Healthy Life Center that was proposed here a while back failed on a public vote, but that didn't change the need for a public aquatic center, indoor aquatic center in the Ames and County community. And so at this point in time, we are working, my office is working on, I'll call it the private or the external fundraising for a project like this with a goal of 10 to 12 million dollars. The city of Ames was, it was brought to their attention by our office in November that the state of Iowa's Economic Development Authority was proposing to open up a program called the Iowa Reinvestment Program. You might recall the arena in Corleville or the Hilton, Hilton Hotel in downtown Des Moines or the former JCPenney in Mason City, Iowa, in their downtown being converted to a hockey arena. Those programs were underwritten in part by an Iowa reinvestment district. We approached the city, encouraged them to give consideration to this in large part because an Iowa reinvestment district needs an economic driver or engine that can fund the program locally. And that economic driver is the redevelopment project on Lincoln Way in downtown Ames that sits between Clark and Kellogg along the Lincoln Way corridor. As that project develops, if this program, if this project were approved for our reinvestment programming, the state sales tax generated from that project or from the retailers, the hotels and things of that nature, anything that generates state sales tax, those tax dollars would be rebated back to the city of Ames over a 20-year period, thus driving a pot of money to fund a catalytic project. In this application process, you must have that economic driver, but then you have to justify your application through catalytic projects that will help and support your community. In this instance, the city of Ames is promoting a new plaza across from city hall to the east of city hall. And the real focal point of the application would be an indoor aquatic center that would sit along Lincoln Way on the DOT property across the street from the DOT's main headquarters on the former St. Cecilia School site. If you're familiar with that, it's located west of downtown. I've also got Brenda Dryer on the phone this morning too, I believe. Brenda may have some added things to say along the lines of the Iowa reinvestment program. Again, my portion of the, the entire process is really to focus on the fundraising. And so that's where we are today. The city did commission RDG out of Des Moines to go ahead and create some site plans, those were in your packet. You'll find a two-story project and a single story. The two-story option is $27.5 million, the single story is $22.8 million. At this point in time, the city council has encouraged city staff to pursue the larger of the two facilities, in part because the second, the larger, the two-story facility would create a walking path on the second floor along with the community room. The ground floor would of course be the aquatic center basins and those basins would consist of a six-lane pool, a lazy river, a warm water therapy pool, a zero-depth entry-level facility along with two water slides. And so that's, that's the project as it sits today. I'm here today in part because of the prior commitment the Board of Supervisors, a previous board, I am fully aware, made to the Healthy Life Center. At that time, the commitment was reported to me as $2 million in direct funding and then $100,000 per year for 25 years to support operations and maintenance of that facility. Today, this is a much different project. Now, I will tell you that the, the dimensions of the aquatic center and the actual amenities of the aquatic center are identical to what was proposed for the Healthy Life Center. That's really where it stops is from a swing standpoint and that walking path that we think opens this facility up to a wide variety of demographics across our population. So at this point in time, we're, we're working through the private fundraising. We also know that this, this Iowa reinvestment program has to come together. We're confident that'll happen as well. We believe the funds generated from that program could range in the 12 to 15 million range. If we can raise 10 to 12 million dollars, it should, it should, that should be italicized probably, it should cover the cost of the, either, either aquatic center. Again, the original commitment from a previous board was 2 million upfront and $100,000 over 25 years. Today, I'm seeking and very respectfully seeking your commitment of $1 million to the project. And then the city has asked me to convey a commitment of $50,000 per year to support the operations and maintenance of this facility. The benefits are many. Currently, we, as, as a county or as a city or in any of our communities, none of us have an indoor swimming option, aquatic center. I noted, and it was almost tongue-in-cheek to a certain degree, but I hear this a lot, that most people in this, in our communities, they'll knock on the doors of our local hotels and see if they can buy some space for a couple hours in the, in the indoor pools at some of our hotels. Given the weather we've had in the last few weeks, the timing, this couldn't be better given the lack of things to do and the, and the lack of opportunities for people, in particular with, with smaller children. But at the same time, I think if this walking track were available, that would be quite popular as well, given the weather that we've endured at this time of year that we endure every year. At the same time, this location is, is really second to none. It's just west of downtown, it's just off of Grand. The Lincoln Way corridor is, is a very highly visible traffic, traffic point. It should be very easy to find for people as they are looking to get to this facility. I'd also mention that it, the site also sits directly on SiRide and that's a great benefit as well for people that use public transportation. Again, the amenities of the facility are abundant, six-lane pool, warm water therapy basin, lazy river, zero-depth entry and two water slides. I think this could be a really unique facility for every resident of Story County if we can get this pulled together. I'm confident that the effort is there, it's just that there are a lot of moving parts with the Iowa reinvestment program and at the same time, the private fundraising. I'll stop there, I'll open it up for questions. I see Brenda joined us. If Brenda's got any added information to provide, I'd certainly open it up for her as well.
Did a great job, Dan. So again, I, there's specific questions about the reinvestment program, I can assist in answering those. One thing, Dan. One thing, Dan, did you mention the intention of the city is to also pursue probably community attraction and tourism funding? And at that point, did you talk about that?
I did not.
So, so one of the things that we'll be able to do with this amenity as well is the city can submit a request for community attraction and tourism dollars. And I know that, that you're probably all aware that when those applications go into the state, one of the requirements is, is a contribution by the Board of Supervisors. So at some point in time, the city would be in front of you making a request to support the project. The reinvestment opportunity, that application has a very small window where we can submit a pre-application, and that's really one of the reasons for driving the request now.
Another thing I'd mention, too, is that, I'm glad Brenda mentioned that specifically because we plan to layer as many things as we can on top of this. So there isn't just one organization, whether it's a government entity or a private entity burdened with funding the whole thing. And so the CAT program's important. I was really grateful that the cities of Story City, Nevada, and Huxley all wrote letters of support for this project. Again, I think what makes this really unique is that none of us have this right now. You know, I know there's, there's a pool at Ames High School right now that I, it is public, but it's, it's tough to get into. This, this, this new aquatic center would be strictly for the public. It wouldn't be closed down for swim meets or for swim time for different clubs and organizations. It would be open to the public to come one, come all. And it has a number of features that I think could make it a really advantageous asset for our marketplace. And so that's why, I guess, we're so bullish on this and we're so excited about this project. And we've worked so hard to try and put all these numerous pieces together is because it is an opportunity to fund something that we think is sorely needed here in Ames and Story County.
Thank you. Supervisors, questions?
I have a question from Brenda. You mentioned the CAT request that the city will be putting in. What's the timeframe on that? When would you, this is an issue to me that they would be coming to us for money to match that as well as this ask.
So my, let me clarify that, Supervisor Merkin. There would be only one request. But again, you just, they'll look for the county wherever a CAT project is located to be financially vested in the project. So there won't be two requests, Linda. By considering this request now, it would also be, that would be indicated on a CAT application when the city gets to that point.
Yeah, that would count.
Let me ask you, though. When is the, what is the city planning to put in for the CAT dollars? What would the timing be for that?
I don't know that that's been identified. Do you know, Dan?
No, but, you know, we, once we submit the preliminary application for the reinvestment program, the city has up to a year to submit their final, their full or their final application. And so the, the timing of some of these things is less critical than, than the general commitment. And so a lot of those things would be folded into this process moving forward, probably over the course of 2021, this year. And so we'd have plenty of time and plenty of notice. And frankly, the distribution of dollars, if you're to choose to make an investment in this project, that is not something in the near term either. The, the best guess for the aquatic center, the best guess, the earliest guess, is that they'd break ground sometime in the middle of 2022. And it would take probably at least 12 to 18 months to build, maybe longer. So the timing of the, of the resources being distributed is, is, it's important, but it's less important right now than the general commitment.
How much do you think they'll be asking for CAT and CAT funds? What amount? It's not because, and not because it's not on the attachment or it's not anything I've seen so far. What I've got for a budget is a staff report December 8th, which then goes to the city staff, and it's not listed there. What would it be part of or would it be, this is only for the 22,000, though. I guess I'm trying to figure out what, what all the sources of funding are and some, some amounts that at least, and knowing they may differ, but to just get a ballpark of what kind of amounts we're talking about for various things.
So when it comes to aquatic centers and swimming pools and those sorts of amenities, because the, the vision Iowa, enhance Iowa Community Attraction Tourism Program, whatever you want to call it, has been around so long, there's really a strong precedent for supporting some of the amenity pieces of the project. And so we have not, just because of all the moving parts to try to get across the finish line with the pre-application, there hasn't really been much of a discussion with the city. But again, our, I think both Dan and I would agree, our experience with the program, with the communities we've worked in, is typically that particular board likes to be supportive of an amenity piece of a project. So Dan, would you have any additional thoughts to that?
Yeah, so, so we, we got CAT funding for the Miracle Park and Playground. I forget the exact piece of equipment, but one thing that we've, we've thought of internally was maybe they buy one of the slides. You know, and I have no idea what a slide costs, folks, but my, my sense is that they would, they would attach a contribution to a slide or some sort of, as Brenda said, an amenity inside the facility. So it wouldn't be a lump sum of money. I think the cap is $1 million. Is that right, Brenda?
Again, it just depends on which aspect of the program, but certainly we wouldn't be doing our job on behalf of the city if we wouldn't at some point in time to try to have the conversation that says, here's a, here's a funding opportunity. It works in tandem with the reinvestment funds. I mean, they're, they're two very, very different programs with different sources of income. So, but again, I, I would suspect when the time comes that we'll, we'll try to tie it to the slides with an S or a slide again, as we move through that process. But again, it's just about diversifying all the, all the different funds that are out there and bringing as many dollars as we can, external dollars, back to Ames and Story County.
And Supervisor Merkin, I, in trying to, in trying to better answer that question, in terms of the sources of revenue, right now, I would see them as, as our reinvestment program and the external fundraising and, and then possibly CAT, the CAT program. Those would probably be the extent. And in that external fundraising side, you know, again, that, that goal is 10 to 12 million dollars. Once, once the preliminary application is, we, we've got time really until they break ground in that pool to continue to raise money, and that will be my intent. I will tell you that, you know, raising a large sum of money in a very short period of time has been somewhat challenging. However, what I would tell you, I've been really encouraged by, I've talked to a number of our larger industries who I thought might give consideration to a contribution to the aquatic center. And while a number of them have said the timing wasn't great, given a whole, a whole host of things, what I've heard loud and clear was Dan come back to me and if there's, if there's an opportunity to put money into a fund to support people who may not be able to afford to go to the aquatic center, if there's a scholarship program or something like that, and the city hasn't talked about that yet either, because this has come together so quickly, but I know that's their intent is to have some sort of way to underwrite people that may not be able to readily afford using the facility. I've heard a lot of, I've heard a lot of expressions of interest in underwriting that from the business community.
Got some information about the CAT grants in front of me. It says CAT apps are accepted quarterly on January 15th, which is already gone, April 15th, July 15th, and October 15th. And as you know, we have another request for a large amount of money, and that's for the Field House in Nevada. And I think they're going for April 15th. So we still have a request there. We're also kind of in the midst of looking at our capital improvement plans for next, the upcoming years. And there's some TIF monies that are, or TIF is a possible source of funding on some of those. And in addition, I think we are normally making our, our decisions on, on the TIF funds in September. So those are just a couple of things we have in front of us, as well as a housing study and a space needs study. So I, I'm just bringing those up because I don't know how we're going to balance all of those right now.
And we can appreciate that, you know. And I, I would offer that the, the Field House project in Nevada is a home run. As an organization, you know, we, we do the economic development work in Nevada, too. We love that project. We think that's a tremendous community asset and really hope you'll give every consideration to supporting that. And we hope that Director Durham from the Iowa Economic Development Authority and her team will support that CAT application for them as well. It's great to see communities reinvesting back at themselves. And yes, it seems like that we, we all come back to Boards of Supervisors and city councils as well to, to reach out, to, to help, help partner and pay for a lot of these improvements. Again, I guess why I was, I was encouraged by making this request is that this, this isn't so time-sensitive, you know? If, if you've got TIF revenues and a couple of years down the road, they can help fund a, a portion of this project, that's where it would be most useful to the city of Ames in this, in this project. And it's a, it's a great way to make an investment in a facility that I can, I can, I can argue a lot of ways, but I could argue that every person in Story County could use this facility in one way or another. I think Mary Greeley Medical Center is greatly interested in that warm water therapy. I think the walking track, again, you know, if you go to North Grand Mall, you'll see a lot of folks walking. This would be another alternative. And so, so we're really excited about this project because we think it's going to be highly accessible to everybody. It's clearly, it's certainly easy to find. I think there's a good chance, if you live in Story County, you've probably driven down Lincoln Way through Ames. And so, and then with the amenities are in place, this could be a really, really terrific project that would also help from a very traditional economic development standpoint in us attracting new businesses to our marketplace, attracting talented people who are looking for amenities like this in which to live. And so we're, we're really grateful for your time this morning. If there's other questions, we're open to that. I do think some of the things relating to the maintenance issues, ongoing maintenance, some of those things, if, if, if you decide to make it a contribution to the project, some of those details would need to be ironed out between the county and the city. But today, we're really here on behalf of a really cool community project that we think would be good for our marketplace.
Supervisor Faisal, I know she's got some questions as well.
Yeah, so the, the pre-application period is from February 22 to 25, correct? So are you, is, are you needing a firm commitment from us before the pre-application can be submitted? Or are you just providing us with information now, giving us a heads up?
You know, we, we'd love, we'd love every indication you can give, as soon as you can give it, but we also understand that we're essentially three weeks out from that deadline, and that may be a little fast for your decision-making process. We would like to know fairly soon. But Brenda, don't you, don't you believe we can submit our preliminary application without, for instance, a, a letter of support or a letter of commitment on this?
Yeah, I, I agree. It would certainly strengthen the, the application in terms of sending a strong, strong message of support from the various levels of government. But certainly can understand that it's, it's short timing. I, I know that Dan mentioned this in his comments. I've been around this business for a very long time, and because this opportunity happens so infrequently, it has one of the most interesting set of guidelines. So if you, it's, it's in the Iowa code under Iowa Reinvestment District, but it's, it's just interesting. And again, we'd like to, it doesn't even tell us exactly how many pieces need to be in place for the pre-application. It's just we know the more that there are in place is the stronger our request. You can watch the news or pick up a paper and can almost guess some of the other projects that are going to be coming in, vying for this opportunity for the state of Iowa. So the only thing I would say is if, if it could be done, it would be great. I know the city would appreciate it as it, as it's, it would, it would mean a lot. But also, I think the, the process itself does allow us to not have all of our eyes dotted and Ts crossed moving into the pre-application phase.
Great. And then the, the total estimated expenditures, was, is that taking into consideration the increased construction costs that we're looking at now post, during COVID? Or is this, were those estimates quite a long time ago?
Good question. These estimates are about two weeks old.
And then you said the, the pool won't be closed down for swim meets? Is there, forgive me, but is there a pool being built within the new high school?
Yes, there is.
When will the city have its projections on the sales taxes? I saw there was a consultant that who was retained for that.
Brenda, can you better answer that?
So I would just remind folks that, remember, I believe the plan with the, the new pool going in at the school is it will not be open to the public. So it would be, it would be for the internal use of the school, just to, to go on record so that people understand that. I know it's been a while since that conversation. So regarding the, the economic impact study, which is what the city, the consultant the city has hired, the city is, is working diligently. I'd say it's probably one of their highest priorities, that and of course, doing their budget for the coming year, but is to really work with the private developer. There's a lot of moving parts. We're not dealing with just one particular building in this area. We're dealing with multiple buildings that generate hotel tax and retail tax. So I think the goal is, is to have a pretty good idea of what that sales, what that revenue stream could look like. But, you know, it'll have to go to a final, final phase as the, as the Lincoln Way developments start to materialize some. But again, that's part of the challenge to try to get as many good details as we can, yet trying to make sure the estimate is realistic so that everybody can make good, good discussions. But we should see something preliminary. I suspect we might be looking at February 20th by the time, by the time, I know that they'll probably end up doing a special council meeting to accommodate having the most current information. So at that point in time, it'll be shared with the council. It will be public, but it would be kind of preliminary based on, on what we know today is going to happen along that Lincoln Way corridor.
The ask for us for the ongoing operating expense money, is that because they have decided that, or they, they don't think the sales tax revenue will cover it?
So the sales, oh, excuse me.
How are they expecting on, on, what, what did they have for revenue estimates to cover the operating budget is my question.
That was my question, too.
Right now, I believe the staff report from the city was they'd have a shortfall of about $400,000. The, this was the estimate based on the Healthy Life Study, was $465,000. In that report, it also suggests from city managers, Shanker, they had not done the, the analysis yet on this facility. I do know that throughout the Healthy Life Center discussion, the vast majority of the shortfall was on the aquatic centerpiece of the, of the, the business, if you will. They just don't cash flow. And so that's where I think the city has every extra. They just don't cash flow. And so that's where I think the city has every expectation. They're going to have to, to backfill this and they're looking for your support as well for the operational side and the maintenance side of this facility.
What you just said, let me, let me try to repeat that. You're, they're using the figures from the Healthy Life Center to project their operating expense shortfall on the Aquatic Center?
No. What I said was in the staff report, Steve Shanker had indicated what the shortfall was going to be for the Healthy Life Center. And he said that at that, at this point in time, they had not conducted what that shortfall would be on this new aquatic center. But I think that would be something that they would certainly produce before any agreement was, was, was put together between Story County and the City of Ames related to operational and maintenance ongoing funding.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if they, he put a dollar amount down. I know that Steve or in the staff report said that there would be a, would require a significant amount of annual tax subsidy or user fee because of, I think it was the shortfall. And that's where I just wasn't clear as to what that, what that shortfall they're, they're potentially looking at.
Are you finding that in the December 8 report?
Yeah, I think it's the last page. It says, even though the initial capital costs will be addressed by the incentive program, an indoor aquatic facility will require a significant amount of annual tax subsidy or user fees to operate. But I don't know what significant, quote unquote, significant amount means. A significant amount, 50,000? Is it 200,000 or 400,000? That's.
Yeah, and I see that the ask for us was just based on half of what the previous board agreed to on Healthy Life Center. So it's, so that's why I'm trying to find more, get more information out of this.
Yeah, and the staff report I'm pulling from is, is January 26th. Where he, where he breaks out the number that was the anticipated shortfall from the Healthy Life Center.
Hold that one up then. Thank you.
Lyndy, you also might have made, might have made a request about would there not be enough sales tax being rebated to fund the operations? And, and the, the short answer is no. The, the retail sales tax will be to fund the construction of the project. And it'll, it'll stop there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? I guess I would just say out loud the same thing that I, I said about the Field House, which was, how, how does someone who lives in Dering benefit directly from this? How does someone who, I, I understand that this would be on the side ride, and that's great if you live in Ames. But if you're from outside of Ames and you have the transportation challenges that we know so many of our residents have, I just have concerns about, about that and their ability to access this fantastic sounding facility. I mean, it sounds like a great facility. I just have concerns about that. So I just wanted to put that out there.
That's, that's a fair point Supervisor Faisal. I, I can't answer that. I, I, I don't know how. I, I, but I, I know we've got infrastructure to support folks that don't have transportation at the ready. I, I know it's, I also know it's not perfect. And so I think that would be something we'd, we'd want to work towards to figure out. Because this is the type of facility that we'd, we would want people to have access to. Brenda, do you have any, any wisdom on that?
You know, I, I will look back kind of on my experience over time with, with similar amenities. You know, once they got built, I was amazed. For example, the community of Osage built a beautiful indoor aquatic center. And the smaller communities in the middle of the winter, whether it be the library or, or the church groups, you know, arranged for public transportation. It, it became a, became an amenity and something to do. And so it, I, I think with time, we will find that our communities and our programs that support our youth and our seniors, because we do have, we do have, you know, transportation subsidized by a great deal by you all. I, I think we're going, they'll find ways. 4H groups will, will have a way. And, and, and again, this will give them a, a place to go that'll be within our county and not outside our borders. And again, I, I feel like whether it be winter swimming lessons and they coordinate that on behalf of their, of their kids in their community. I think, I, I hate the term, if they build it, they will come, but it's being designed in such a way that it does, can accommodate a wide spectrum of our population and yeah, it, I, I'm excited. I know it's a lot of moving pieces and I can respect the, 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 the big decision in front of all of you as relates to this project. But I think there's no plans now, but I just believe it's going to be a, a strong enough amenity that our communities will find a way to connect their citizens.
Well, we did the vote on the Healthy Life Center. I visited other communities in Story County that have some community centers that have recreation. I visited, I visited Story City, I visited Huxley, and I also talked with the person who was then the city administrator in Nevada. And he shared with me what they had at that time as plans for their Field House. And one of the reasons that I didn't vote for the Healthy Life Center funding was I felt like there were other amen, there were other amenities around, not all, in every single town in our, in our county. But with Story City and Huxley and the Nevada plan, I thought that there was, there would be limited, the non-aquatic parts of the Healthy Life Center, I felt like there would be limited use from a lot of the residents, non-Ams residents in the county. The one thing that nobody else does have, as you pointed out, is an indoor pool. And with Ames and high schools, you know, decision to go on their own and not, not contract anymore, not partner anymore with the city, we know that is a need. I also thought that the, I was not very crazy about the site that they had because it was so far off the beaten path. And I felt like even for people living within the City of Ames, living in the, say the southeast area of Ames, like the Kate Mitchell School area, I mean, those people were a long ways away from that site. So I think for Ames, this is a better site. Whether it's a better site for the county in general, it's not a worse site. It may, it'd be slightly better. But I, I still think it's got that uphill battle of, you know, of that in terms of county funding. Personally, I would like to wait a while for us to make a decision on this. Because I think there's a lot of things that, there's a lot more information that's going to come along in the next few weeks. Both from the, from the city, what they're looking at in terms of, you know, what's the, you know, the, the economics of it, the sales tax revenue. And also we have so much on our plate right now because we have not done, we have not completed our budget. We have not looked at that. We've got a second draft of our CIP to look at later today. We've got the housing needs. We've got, we've got a lot of things, space needs, a lot of things on our plate as well. And, and I think the final thing that made me think, let's wait, is noticing that the next deadline for the CAT funds is April 15th. You know, if, if they need to know for that, whether or not the county's going to, you know, going to be doing a contribution, they don't need to know that on February 7th. So my, my thought for you supervisors is that we wait, we follow this, we see what more information is coming out. And I think that'll give us more of an idea of direction. That's, that's just my thought about this right now.
Yeah, you know, I can just comment as, as well. I think you two have asked or all the questions that I had and stuff, so I appreciate all of that. I do think this is an innovative project and I do think the communities would benefit from that. My only reservation at this time is because we haven't finished our budgeting. And so it's kind of hard to commit some dollars when I'm not even sure where we're, where we're at yet. I just don't feel like I'm doing my due diligence on that. You know, if you came back to me in another month, we'd have a better picture of where we're at. It's just the timing of it. And I understand you're under that tight, that tight timeframe as well. So you know, I'm not saying yes or no. That's just my, my concern is we haven't even completed our processing through yet to know where we're at financially with the projects that are within the budget that's been, that we've been working on as well. And how much dollars we're going to actually have and those that carry over into subsequent years. That's, you know, I, I don't want to get us in a situation as well. That's just my, my concern.
Any more discussion?
Well, I understand it's also that you don't have to have, you don't have all your funding necessarily put together when you put in a pre-application. Because the majority of this funding is general obligation bonds. And obviously, they've not had the, you know, bond issue yet. So, so I assume a pre-application is more about the concept and is this something that, you know, fits? And what are the general, you know, generally what does it look like rather than we have every dollar nailed down?
Yeah, I think that's true. I, I think we, we are going to characterize where our likely sources of, of funds on the, on the external side will come from. And so we will, we will clearly identify to the state. The request has been made this morning so that they understand that we're, we're trying to reach a, a wide variety of partners and a lot, a wide variety of resources to help support the project.
Yeah, and I understand you're under a time crunch, but you have to have that submitted within a, within the next few weeks, which makes it challenging when you're right in the midst of budget, your, your budget process. You need to come out one year after your budgeting process. It'd make it so much easier. It'd make it so much easier.
Yeah, you know, that's, that's why I guess not every, every market is, is doing an application like this. I mean, the last round, there was, there was only a few. This, this is, this is heavy sledding. It really is. Not just for people like Brendan and myself or Steve Shanker and his team, but for everybody involved. I mean, we are, we, we've got the DOT going through an appraisal process right now. I didn't mention on that site. And the agreement is that only the City of Ames can buy that site for a public purpose. But you know, originally we thought maybe, just maybe the DOT could give that site to the city because it was for a public, for public good. And we went through a number of gyrations there to finally figure out that the only way we could even think about having access to the site was through an independent appraisal. And whatever that appraisal says, the City of Ames has to pay that to the DOT for that property. And so that was another moving piece. And so, yeah, I mean, this is not for the faint of heart. And, but we, we love this project and we think it has tremendous benefit. And the fact that it was nothing more than a phone call to our partners in three of our, our communities in Story County to say, hey, we think this makes sense. Would you give consideration to writing a letter of support? I had them all the same day. So I, I do think there would be interest in this. I do think people would use this far, far and wide outside of just people from Ames. And so I, I hope you give this every consideration as you go through your budgeting process. And please understand that money doesn't need to be, it does not need to come from your next fiscal year. You know, we'd prefer, I think the city would prefer that it didn't come in years 12 through 15 of, of the 20-year program for the Iowa Reinvestment Program. But I think there's latitude and that's where I think the City of Ames and, and you as, or supervisors can, can ultimately determine what that looks like.
Well, and that's where I appreciate to both of you being here today because you've provided more information to us to further do some investigations and some questioning, having some conversations on that so that we, you know, make a good sound decision on that.
Can I ask one more question? I just realized and I, I can't remember. How many years does the state portion of sales tax come to Ames if this is, if this happens?
Good question. 20 years, yes.
20 years, okay. Thank you. That's what I thought I remembered.
But the, the 50,000 a year ask is for 25, correct? And then did, did the conversation happen that the city would indeed charge non-Ams residents the same as they charge Ames residents for membership or use of the facility?
That's correct. I think if there's a contribution upfront and there's a, a commitment to the ongoing operation, that's the City of Ames, every intention is that there'd be a one rate for people of Story County, not just people of Ames. Yes.
Healthy Life Center ask, there was also, was it a 3% increase on the operating money every year for all 25 years? Do you recall that? I think so. I think that was in the agreement that was signed. And, and that, that can escalate pretty quickly. You're getting 3% on top of 3%. And I didn't see that in your email.
No, and that, that was not conveyed to me Supervisor Merkin. It was 50,000 a year for 25 years. I think that'd be a question as this process moved forward, but I heard loud and clear on Friday, Friday afternoon that it was 50,000 a year for 25 years.
All right, with that supervisors, I'm just going to ask if anyone has a motion to make? Not saying any motions today on it, but I do appreciate your presentation. You've certainly given us a lot to review as we continue our budgeting process. And I wouldn't be surprised to have you before us again in the near future.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate your time and consideration this morning. We know this is a big project for everybody involved, but we're really grateful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you.
Okay, moving on with our agenda. Consideration of minutes. Shelley, I have just done, I see we have one, 4, 12, 19, and 26, but I think we only have for 12, 15, 20, and 29. Is that correct?
All of January.
And all of January? Okay, I just missed.
Four, 12, 19, 26.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So, so.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Seddon's aye. Next we go on to consideration of personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve personnel actions as presented?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Seddon's aye. Consideration of claims. Is there a motion to approve claims as presented?
I move to approve all claims as presented. Second.
Moved by Merkin, seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Seddon's aye. Consent agenda. Has anyone pulled anything from the consent agenda? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented? And we have the consent agenda items as presented. Second. Moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Seddon's aye. Now we are down to number 16, public hearing items. We have no public hearing items. So now we are on to additional items. Discussion and consideration for memorandum of understanding for enhanced security services between Story County and the state of Iowa. Is Barb on the line?
Kyla.
Or Kyla, I'm sorry.
Good morning supervisors. So a little background on this. Couple of years ago, the state Couple of years ago, the state put in a couple of devices free of charge to counties who wanted to participate to help strengthen their cybersecurity posture. There was no paperwork associated with any of that at that time. Since then, there's been some questions from other counties on, uh, what if the federal grant funding runs out? You know, what, what are we going to be charged? So the state is just trying to get ahead of, of any of that. Jesse Martinez is our program director down at the state and he does not see the grant funding expiring anytime in the near future. But that MOU kind of lays out the groundwork for if it did, um, how they would determine the cost sharing between counties. And at that time, if it's something that we didn't want to pay for, it does give us a 45-day notice to withdraw for any reason or no reason whatsoever. We had Ethan take a look at it and after talking with Jesse, doesn't have any, any serious concerns. We, we have Ethan's blessing if, if you guys agree with that.
How many counties do this?
I, I don't have an exact count, but it was open to any county in the state that wished to participate.
So can you point me to where it talks about, or does it talk about how much money we might be charged?
They, they don't have any quotes put together yet at all. They were just laying out the groundwork for if there is a cost, it'll be pulled together and discussed at that time. But they, they don't anticipate charging any money unless the Department of Homeland Security grant expires, which it doesn't. No plans for that, at least that they're aware of.
Need to give us written notice and we have 45 days. Wait.
Yeah, from, from Ethan's email, uh, termination language in 13.1 is acceptable. Anytime you start to have concerns, we are unhappy, we can opt out on 45 days for any reason or no reason at all.
So what benefit have we seen from that?
We, uh, it lets us know if we've skipped, skipped software patches. It also lets us know if outside entities are scanning, scanning our public IPs, looking for vulnerabilities. We can block, block those entities. It's just a, it's an extra layer of security.
Kyle, you said we have, what, a couple of these devices? Is that correct?
We do. We have, I forget what the first one is called. It's, it's the, the patch, the patch checker. And then they also supply the FireEye device, which is in, which is a intrusion detection system.
And is there, are there any costs to us on any upkeep of those devices?
No, they are currently 100% paid for by a Department of Homeland Security grant.
Any other questions supervisors? So I guess the question is, is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for enhanced security services between Story County and the state of Iowa?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Merkin, seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Hedin's aye. Approved. Thank you Kyle for the information.
Thank you board.
Uh, next we'll move on to discussion and consideration of a proposal from YSS to address the pandemic impact on the Kids Club program for a one-time funding request of $25,000. And look, we have Sandra King before us and I know, please, I guess Andrew is on the line as well.
Yes, good morning board. I just want to introduce the proposal from YSS. They requested $25,000 to cover financial losses for their Kids Club program. And this is due to significant decrease in enrollment resulting from the pandemic. And as you mentioned, Andrew and a member of his team is available for questions.
Hi, hi Andrew, how are you this morning? Just wanted to make sure that he can hear us.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't hear you. Morning.
Okay, great, great. Supervisors, questions? Go ahead.
You can. Okay. You say you closed programs for three months. Last year created financial losses of 80,000. Is that, you took the last fiscal year?
Yeah, it would have been last, correct, last fiscal year.
Okay, so you, but you managed to get through last fiscal year. And now you're asking for funds to use this fiscal year, correct?
Yeah, that's right. I think I put in the letter forecasting, we had projections of $123,000 worth of losses through the end of the fiscal year. That went up to 162,000. We did close the Iowa State program, which had been opened as a pilot. We just didn't get the enrollment there. So we're going to save on at least not losing money there. And then yesterday we got word from DHS that we're getting an additional $3,000 per site, per month through the end of the year to address pandemic-related issues, bringing the forecasted losses down to 114,859 for the rest of the fiscal year.
123,000 is now 114,000?
Yeah, 114,859.
When did you, you say you closed the ISU program. So did you lay off staff when you closed that program?
Yeah, most of our Kids Club staff are PRN, so part-time as needed. And so while we have had to staff up through the pandemic, we've got lower numbers of kids. We, I think in the letter said 40% reduction. We've run it through January and year over year, we're down 51% from a census standpoint. So anytime we don't need part-time staff, they're just not scheduled from, from an hour standpoint. We've got supervisors that are still on the payroll, not for Iowa State of course, but for the, the program as a whole.
So you're 114,859. Is that your revenue shortfall? Or is that your revenue shortfall less your savings of closing the ISU program and less your savings of PRN staff hours?
The latter. That includes the elimination of the Iowa State program and the reduction in costs from a staffing standpoint.
Okay. I hope to see some kind of an itemization of that in your letter.
Okay, um, I, I'm happy to provide any additional information. I've got lots of numbers, both in front of me and that could be provided to the board as well, including updated forecasts through December. We don't have January financials, of course, done yet.
When did you reopen your locations?
Uh, we started in the summer. So Jen Schmidt is on. She's our program manager. I'm not sure if she can talk, but I've got, you know, the numbers compared month over month. And we did start summer programming in as early as June. But Ballard, for instance, had 55 kids last June and just 19 kids this June. Gilbert K through 12 had 47 kids last June and only six kids this June. So we didn't necessarily know, you know, I think on the onset of the pandemic, there had been conversations across communities about ramping up childcare, knowing that we had, you know, critical, essential workers in service positions. And we would need additional childcare. What we found was there was less need and a lot of that had to do with the kids not being in school, but then also, you know, family members potentially being laid off as well.
And you've also requested 25,000 for United Way. Did you request any additional money from the other part, other asset partners, funders?
Uh, ACPC, it was kind of interesting. They started with the presentation. So we don't run a program in Ames because ACPC does a good job at taking care of the, the city of Ames. And then the GSB really works. You know, we probably would have ultimately asked them for funding had the Iowa State program continued. The region, we've tried, again, I know they're not an asset agency anymore, but we've, we've tried multiple different angles to get funding from the region, but not been able to find the right fit. We did kind of launch a community-wide campaign. So we have asked United Way for funding. Of course, we've asked you for funding. We've also gone out to the private sector as well. I'm happy to report we've raised 50,000. So American Packaging gave five, Craig Tool gave 10, Jeff Becker and his family foundation gave 10, Fairway and Reynolds Kramer gave 10, Midwest Family Mutual gave 50. So we raised 50,000 and we've still got other requests outstanding. That 50,000 is also included in the number to, to offset expenses to get down to the 114,000.
So Andrew, I do have a question. So my understanding is you're, you're saying the losses are for this fiscal year, so fiscal year 21. Right. And so, um, are, is it, because I'm, I'm looking at what, what the award was for asset, which was about 81,000 dollars and then for the, just the Kids Club program and then lost the local option dollars. You had another about 3,800 plus dollars. And then I'm looking at just overall, uh, for the county funds, you have about 76,000 yet to draw down. So are you, and I'm just wondering, are you, are you going to be drawing down those dollars? Are you looking for 25,000 beyond the 76,000 that's not drawn down yet? I'm just seeking some clarification there.
Yeah, I was, we were seeking 25,000 on top of what had not been drawn down. But unless we make an adjustment to the rate with which we're drawing down the funds, we will have money left on the table again. So I didn't want to get that out of order, but I, I do think there's a significant opportunity to look at the rate that we're able to draw down funds for Kids Club. I know when you award those, you, you want agencies to use them. Uh, we had been projecting a 25% increase in census when we submitted this request two years ago to asset to be funded. You, you gave a generous award of $68,000 plus the local option of 66,000. We had some carryover funds that didn't get spent last year because census had ramped down. And so at the current rate, we're only projected to draw down about 2,500 per month. Over six months, that's just $15,000 out of a $75,000 balance. So that essentially leaves $60,000 on the table that we're not going to be able to draw down at the current rate. And that, you know, the, the rate is, you guys know for asset, it's based on our estimates of units. And so we kind of shot ourselves in the foot. We had been being paid $17.04 per unit of service because we projected a 25% increase two years ago. Now we're only getting paid 12.63 per unit of service. So we've been projecting a 25% increase and what we saw was a 50% decrease, which really shot us in the foot as it relates to our ability to, to draw down those funds that you've already essentially allocated to support the service. So, you know, one additional option would be to increase the amount of money we're able to draw down per unit of service. And if you increased it 4X from 12.63 to $50.52, that would draw down the full, the full amount of money.
Are you going to be making that proposal next week?
I just kind of figured that out. So, and, and Sandra, you know, helped encourage that by asking some questions to include in the letter, like the, the fund balance. So as I was, um, as I was preparing for this, I, I asked that same question, like, hey, guys, what, what are we doing to draw down these funds? I, I could resubmit that separately as a, another request, yes. And could give you additional information and numbers and details.
Does the, the next step then to me seems to be that you meet with the asset administrative team and see what might be able to be worked out there as opposed to the county finding yet 25,000 more dollars? It, it seems cleaner.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I think you're, uh, yeah, that was kind of my thought too. Because if you're looking for 25,000 more, but you're going to leave money on the table.
Right.
Is, let's say, potential way. And I do think, you know, meeting with, with Sandra and maybe o- other members of that asset team to figure out what, what can you do to help address that?
And I presume that would just be for the remainder of this fiscal year and change rates for?
And, and, you know, I, yeah, and I understand that asset is based on services. So it's really, you know, how do you make that connection to the service that you're doing? And I understand because of the pandemic, it has, I've seen that dramatic drop and stuff. But I, I, for me, I would just want to see that the asset team is making sure that they are able to work with you, whatever they, discussions they could potentially come up with that connect to the service.
And allows you to access the funds that have already been identified or committed first.
And it seems like that itemization that we kind of talked through today, Andrew, about how you arrived at the number. You know, because you gave more information than was in your memo about, um, you know, how mu- how much did you save on the, on the PRN salary savings? What have you gotten from DHS now to lower it? The, you know, itemize the, the private donations. I think it's an itemization of, of, that justifies the number you need. And then, and then I think that could be helpful. And then you can talk about whether there's another way other than this infusion of cash that, I think that makes more sense.
Yeah, I guess for me, I was trying to figure out too, when I was looking at your, the amount that you were allocated via asset, the disparity between that, you know, what, 81,000 or 85,000 total with the 114,000 that you just mentioned, I'm, there, you know, there's what, $30,000 difference there?
Well, most, yeah, sure. Most of that revenue is already included in the revenue estimates for Kids Club program. With the exception of the 50,000 that we're not going to draw down from the county at the current rate.
Sorry, Andrew, I couldn't hear you very well. What, what did you say? I'm sorry. It was, I couldn't hear you very well.
Yeah, you can't, we've already included revenue from asset that 100 and, or I'm sorry, $83,000 has already been included in the budget, what, what's been drawn in and what's been forecasted, with the exception of the $60,000 that it doesn't look like it will draw down from the county. So that's not, the asset money is already figured into the budget and the forecast. It's not on top of the 114,000. But, yeah, everybody is on the same page that there's $60,000 already allocated from Story County that it does not look like we're going to draw down and it is not in the forecasted budget either. So that's, it's a great place to start or to, to go back to. It'll still leave about a $60,000 loss for the program, but that's a whole heck of a lot better than 115.
At this particular time, it would be better for you to go back and talk with the asset team to figure out what you could potentially do to draw down. And then figure out if there's something that would have to come back to us or not come back to us. Because you're already looking at how you're drawing down right now, that you're not going to draw it down anyways. And I, and those fits the challenges that you're having.
That's right. And I don't know how easy it is. Again, I think it makes sense to have asset executive team do it or admin team do it together because it potentially impacts their funding as well. But I, I hear you supporting at least that, that process of evaluating increased cost per unit of service that, to draw down these funds this year.
Yeah.
I'm collecting them. We're, we're just direct them to look at it, not, not to adopt that solution.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the opportunity. I think Jen- I think Jen and her team are doing a great job. This is really, really difficult work. I think, you know, you heard ACPC sure share it. These are small teams and small school districts and, and families that are really, really dependent upon this. And I will tell you, we'd had kind of an initial assessment that we thought of the kids that we were seeing, the percentage that were on the sliding fee scale was higher because those were the families that had direct service jobs and, you know, middle or higher income folks were working from home and didn't need as much childcare. That, as we've seen it, it's, it's about the same right now in three of our school districts. It hasn't changed a lot. And so I, I asked the team why that was and they said, gosh, you know what, those lower income families, they can't even afford the low end of our sliding fee scale, which I think is about 100 bucks a week-ish. It's not, it's not very much. And so the pandemic, because we had shut down, forced them to find alternative areas and places to care for their kids. In some cases, it might be better with a family member. In some cases, it's not nearly as good, but they continue to seek alternatives to having to pay for childcare. So I think we're, we're going to continue to look at how can we ensure that those families that really need it, even if they can't pay for it, get access. All right, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
And it sounds like, Sandra, we've given you some information, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sandra, thank you.
Thank you.
To all. Okay, moving on, we have discussion and consideration of contract number 21 E S D W Q B Common dot 0001 between the Iowa DNR member entities of the Headwaters of the South Skunk River Watershed Management Authorities for $100,000.
If it is still morning, good morning.
Good morning. So the board, previous board approved Story County to act as a fiscal agent in November of 2020. I should say I'm representing Mike, that, so thank you for allowing me to do that. The, did send a letter of support to the DNR for an application back in November. We did receive, on the Watershed Management Authority for the Headwaters of the South Skunk, received the planning grant an amount of $100,000. The Watershed Management Authority itself, however, according to the 28E agreement that formed, that entity is not a legal entity and as such cannot sign contracts. We are working through a process to change that. However, at this point in time, because we have a contract that needs signed immediately as there's planning grant, each jurisdiction that participates in the 28E has to go through this process. So that's why I'm here today to seek approval to sign the contract. It's not $100,000 coming to Story County, it's for the, for the Watershed Management Authority. So a little bit confusing. Hopefully, when we get the 28E agreement and bylaws amended, we won't have to go through this process. Are there questions?
I would just point out that they put my name on this in error. I don't know if they're thinking that I was chairing last year, that I was chairing, uh, that we train this year, or because he got confused about whether or not the WMA was a legal entity. If the WMA was a legal entity, I could sign for as chair of the WMA, but this is signing for Story County, so it will be supervisor and signing as chair. Also, you'll need to change 2020 to 2021. I just noticed this morning on the signature page.
Okay.
They sent out 2020.
I, I should add, this has been through review, Mike did work with Ethan Anderson. And this is the same contract that each jurisdiction will, will sign accordingly with appropriate names and dates.
Any other questions, comment?
I just want to thank the auditor's office for being, being willing to act as fiscal agent for this grant. I hope it's a simple, painless one. I think it should be.
It's always a dream.
We can dream, can't we?
All right, this is one thing you have to read. All right, is there a motion to sign contract number 21 dash E S D dash W Q B dash Common dash 0001 between the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and member entities of the Headwaters of the South Skunk River Watershed Management Authority for $100,000 for the purchase of preparing a watershed management plan for the headwaters of the South Skunk River?
Oh, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon?
Aye.
Thank you, that was kind of a tongue twister.
Nice to say so moved or seconded. That was, that was the easy part.
Yes. Next on the agenda is, Leanne here, is for discussion and consideration of the 2021 communications plan.
Oh, yeah. So this, the communications plan originally was formed and adopted by the board of supervisors dating back to 2014. Each year I come before you for an annual review, generally that, that happens in December into January. We are a little bit late just because of the nature of the beast with scheduling this year. The communication plan is a tool from the board of supervisors to help direct staff as well as others beyond just my position to help understand the role of county government, services we provide, just general outreach. It's an entire gamut of, of topics are covered under that. It does really serve as part of my work program. And then as well, if I do have an intern that's working with me, we work on a lot of these strategies as part of the outreach component of my position. And there's some other strategies though that are part of other departments and I'll go through those. As I walk through it, I did send, as I said, this out in December for feedback. And as I go through, I'll share that feedback as I walk you through it. It is outlined with goals and then target audiences. And then when you get to the strategies, they relate back to the goals. Are there any general questions on, on why we have this and, and the goals and the target audiences? Hearing none, I'm going to go right to the strategies then. The first strategies fall under the goal of transparency and accessibility through duration of projects and issues in Story County and access to factual information for the public and county employees. What's in front of you, I'm going to just highlight what are the new items and then go through some of the comments that I received as well. I do want to start with the annual report though, that is not a new item, but given your action this morning with the termination of the contract with Gay House Media, we will have to redo the layout. We will be publishing in the Sun for the annual report, which is what I'm working on now. Will be more of a, a social media platform and web-based platform to release it. It is going to take some time, but I'll be, it'll be a good delivery item to get out there. That's not new, I just wanted to share that, given the action you took this morning. A couple new items that are on here is the third bullet point, the live stream meetings on Facebook and YouTube throughout the.
What page are you on?
Yep. Are you, page six? I have a different copy, so.
Okay.
I have a paper copy.
Strategy feed and action step four.
Yeah, everyone there? Okay. Then this is a new item that was suggested through the review of the annual, or the communications plan. There are still some, some bandwidth issues and some technic- technological issues to work through, but if it's put on the communications plan, it's something I can look into and seeing if it is something that's a goal towards which we can work and achieve over the next year. The other two new ones that are on this list are, are towards the bottom and it's kind of a revision of the statement. It's finalizing the mission statement and engage employees. We've been through the process of developing it, we've developed it, we have a mission and core values. I'm finishing the branding of that and we'll be bringing that back to the board here shortly. And now it's building into the engagement too with employees. And then the last one is establishing a process for employees to nominate another employee for award for excellence living the mission. So we're kind of tied, tying back to that mission statement. So those are the three new ones under this, this, this specific goal. Are there any questions on the new ones? Just some comments then on the existing one that you guys did share with me. I do want to note that since I sent this out last December, former supervisor Lauren Wilson did provide feedback as well. So some of these are her comments as well. Under the county news, which is our internal newsletter that we send to county employees, the comment was made to turn this over to, to team story and questioning how many people actually read it. And I have not reached out to team story. But I'll be glad to do that too. I mean, it really, it's a minor point. It, it doesn't take a lot of time to develop it or the layout, it's just more gathering content. The next one down is the department videos and video descriptions of department duties and services. The comment was, comments were made, this has not been done in a while. And I know we have the recruitment video and post that on our website and it is posted under human resources on our website, the recruitment video. Then there was another comment, it would be great to have elected officials, department head, department heads do a short video for their pages on the county website. And that's, that'd be fantastic too. So that would fit right under this as well and that would help with a little overview of what departments do. And then the last comment that was received, there was a, regarding the press releases, there was a suggestion that after each board meeting, to do just a brief meeting summary in a press release format to my media contacts. And that would be part of the, as I'm developing the video, that's just part of the, putting the press release out as well. So that would just fall under that timely press releases unless you'd like a specific strategy that says that.
I think it would be good to, yeah, because I think otherwise we're not getting very much, very much press in the trip right now. It's mostly a Des Moines media market, it seems. And if we send out a press release, they're more likely to say, oh, we've got something to put on the, in Ames as opposed to them spending the time and being an involved or anything else. And, and the other thing is, we just had a lot of feedback from constituents about, I don't know what's going on in county government, I didn't know if this was happening, I didn't know that was happening. And that might be helpful.
I think, I would agree. I think part of the challenge is, is people aren't necessarily reading the newspaper. So what are other modalities out there to give the information out as to what the county is doing?
If you've got a brief, brief press release, can you put it on Facebook?
I can do it on all, all of our social media. We're actually, and I will come back to you probably later this year with some analytics on where we are with Twitter and Instagram. But I am amazed since the pandemic, since we closed almost nearly a year ago now and then to the public our facilities and started using our website and online tools, how our, specifically our Twitter and our Instagram followers have increased. And usually a day does not go by that we don't add one or not two on Instagram. And I think that's a key, key element to keep on building too. Yeah, but then they can all be shared, that press release. So that would just be generally adding it into the daily routine for Tuesdays to get that out.
Easy way to just like, do one thing, use share across the platform.
Yeah, that's why I use HootSuite and that was one of the, and then Canva, the request for Can, for Canvas during next fiscal year, the professional part of it does allow me to get, do that, the, the graphic and then push it out there a little bit easier. Going on to the next one, the goal is sharing the Story County vision with the general public and decision makers. There are no new, no new strategies proposed under this that were brought up. I do want to just provide some feedback that I did receive. On the first one, that is assisting human resources with creating onboarding recruitment program materials, just some history, the, the on, current onboarding video that Story County has for new employees was developed by an intern and in, internally in our office, the board's office. The comment was made that this should continue to be outsourced with HR providing direction and assuring consistent branding. So that'd be a little bit of different direction because the onboarding video was not outsourced. But I'm, I'll be working with Noel. We do need to definitely update the onboarding video so we can look at different options and definitely making a lot more succinct in the video. And then we get to our story, which is county-wide newsletter publication. There was a comment made that if we don't do it printed each quarter, can we link it to the public to click on read our Facebook and website? And it's out there and as I publish it, I do, I do press releases and get it out there too on social media, but we can continue to push that messaging so people know it's there.
So, so does that, so like, talk about click on it, would it almost be like an icon on Facebook where they click and it would come up?
That's what, I, I'm trying to look at different, I think, I think some of the modules we have in Civic Plus may allow me to do a little bit more than what I've been doing with it. Right now it's a static PDF, so you kind of have to scroll through it. Even if we can't do it, when we talk about the website redesign, there's a, I think it's called Civic Send, we may want to look at that module, not just for us, but for like conservation and others. But yeah, it, it should be a little bit more interactive rather than just having people, especially if they're on a mobile device, trying to zoom in and out of a, of a large PDF and, and trying to be, read it. And what we'll continue to do though, because not everyone is digital, sending the, the paper copies to the news, to the libraries, the city halls too. We generally send like two or 300 out so that they have those to, to hand out too. And I, I've always heard positive feedback from the libraries of asked, did they go out? And they do. So we'll, we'll continue that as well. But I am, it's unfortunate that I'm having to do redesign our story right now, but it's giving me opportunity to play with it a little bit and see what I can do, although that's a larger spread than our normal newsletter. But I, I hope to have that out hopefully by the end of this week so it can be a timely annual report. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, yeah, because I'm just kind of being a few, you know, if I'm on my iPad or on my computer, you know, if you have on Facebook or something that says, okay, here's, here's, you know, our county or our quarterly news or, you know, biannually, that they can click on it and it, they could go right to it and actually see kind of what we, what we would see and stuff. Would just be really nice versus having to go, okay, I clicked on here and I've got to scroll through and find, where do I click here to get?
Yeah.
To get there. That's just too.
Just the short, easy shortcuts.
Short, short and easy, yeah.
What we are finding with, with Facebook, something in their, on their end, when we copy and paste from the county's website, a link into Facebook, it adds something so that our link does not work. So thankfully Matt Corey with Environmental Health has figured this out and will be able to help me figure out what I need to check, but I'm, that, I, I hear your message. It, it needs to be an experience for the user to get the information too. Any questions on that goal?
This is probably a longer discussion, I don't have time for now, but something I think about a lot is I don't see consistency in our annual reports from year to year on the kind of things we're reporting on. It's almost like it's more of a newsletter and then an annual report. I'd like to talk about that sometime because I think, I think there needs to be, you know, my previous existence, it was like you doing the same things in every year's annual reports where people could see trends, they could see progress, they could see whatever. Like I said, this, this annual report seems more like a newsletter to me.
Yeah, I, I agree with that comment. They all happen and that just has been the nature of the beast for me to get content from the different elected officials and. And that just has been the nature of the beast for me to get content from the different elected officials and departments. But I'd like to start the annual report discussion, I hate to say this, but even in September this year, so that I can start putting some of that trends together. Our first and second iterations, we had some, these are numbers of board meetings, these are the numbers of items. And I still track that, just space this year. I think last, we didn't have the ability to put it in. But there's opportunities with planning and development to look at where the trends are for, and even visually showing that using mapping and other elements.
And it might repeat other things that are elsewhere on the website, but you know, people don't actually go to the website. I really, really like the graphs that the auditor's office does about the budgets and the revenues. Putting those in the annual report on a consistent basis, just a couple of those, you know.
We might even look at shifting our annual report to more of a fiscal year basis, though.
Yeah.
Rather than just calendar year.
Let's, yeah, I would love to have that discussion.
Yeah.
Let me get this one done, then.
Yes.
So going on to the next goal is improving communications between the board of supervisors and our constituents. There is a new one on this one. It's the very last one, which I'm on page eight on my copy. It's the YouTube updates for the board of supervisors. Former supervisor Rick Sanders, three years ago, four years ago? Four years ago. Prior to every, I think it was every Monday he'd do a preview of what was happening at the board meeting. And then after it, he'd do a review of the meeting. I had no involvement in it whatsoever. He was doing his own videos and here uploading and doing that, other than making sure they were in correct chronological order. Suggestion was made to review or the potential of doing that again, again to gain the message out there. I don't think, it was a cumbersome exercise for him. Whether it be the chair doing or rotating schedule, but that was suggested to be added. And if you guys would agree, we could figure out how to do that, make that work. Just some, a couple items that are new from last year's, but they're not new strategies. I've brought them back and I'll explain why. One is to analyze website tools, modules, and capabilities for potential implementation. I've added that one back in just because we're doing our website refresh this year, starting this year. And I want the opportunity to look at, like I said, the Civic Send. And then we had some segments that were called Get to Know Story County. Actually, Paul Toot was one of our very first person, board members to do this. He, I think, interviewed Darren Moon and we put it on our website. It was meant to be like a podcast. I'd like to get back to looking at that and seeing if we could do that. And not just naturally the board interviewing department heads, elected officials, but other members of our county staff and just sharing some of our stories of what makes Story County what it is. Just some feedback I received from current and former board members. I love this one, very top one, increasing engagement on social media. I said how we are really seeing increased followers. That would be good if we could tag other communities in Story County. I need to spend some time finding out everyone's handles, whatever it is. And then, so I can start doing that. I think that's a great suggestion. And I'm seeing that happen for others doing that, particularly Nevada, now that they've hired a full-time outreach individual, them doing as well. I think that is, that is great. Then for monthly radio updates, accounting events and activities. As you know, I go on KHOI every month. I'm trying to get on KASI monthly as well. That was a suggestion. The quadrant meetings are something that were added like four, five years ago. We started doing those throughout Story County. It took a little bit of break. The suggestion was to add them back in this year, but not do one this spring because COVID, the pandemic is still very, very present. But look at a possible round of them this fall. And really, they had been, they initially had been envisioned as an opportunity of dialogue with elected officials and members of our communities. But it became more of a county staff presenting information, here's what's happening, and not really a two-way dialogue. So the suggestion, make it more of a listing sessions.
And I think that would take some strategizing. I think that will, maybe somebody else remembers quadrant meetings. I went to some of them before I was on the board and I found them to be very one-sided. And I think what you need to do, what we need to do is think of ways to draw folks out, you know, rather than just talking, talking, hoping they'd say something.
There were definitely an evolution of how those, the first ones we had to, when we quit doing them, how they looked and felt.
Yeah.
And I'd like to go back to how they first emerged because that truly was that format. So I do have some historical information I can go back to on that. There was a question on the item, conduct a technology needs analysis. And mine cut off. The question was raised with us related to broadband study. It's not, it's actually making sure that for the county to do what we need to do for outreach, we have the technology available, whether that's looking at my computer, which is new now. But I didn't have a webcam, so now I have a webcam. Making sure that we're always knowing what tools are out there and communicating that. And then Speakers Bureau presentation is the last one on this page I want to discuss. It's been in there for quite a while. We have a canned presentation that needs to be refreshed. So I will add that to my to-do list. It's actually in here twice, so remove it from the next goal. It belongs in this area. But the suggestion was to track and promote internally and externally presentations given by elected officials. That would be great if we could note. That will be a little bit challenging because a lot of times elected officials may just be giving a presentation and not really expecting it because they're at an event and, hey, can you share this, an update with us? So that, those types of presentations really wouldn't be something we want tracked. But at least knowing who's doing what, so we can say, hey, Treasurer Rasmussen is planning on presenting to this and this and such day, and maybe helping promote it, too, just for example. I do need to update that PowerPoint, as I said, to add something about each department. It's really started out really keying in on what the board supervisors did and then expanded out slightly. It needs to be more comprehensive. And as I said, that would be added. Any questions on that goal? This will, well, the next two will go fast, I promise. Engage in the community through service and recognition. Citizen of the Year is one of the items I'll, if we, if the board acts on adopting this, start getting that out, information out here and listing nominations for that. Hopefully we can do it maybe in person this year. Although we found that even using a family, we can do it this year. That was a great, great nomination and award, the way we were able to do that. Again, remove the Speakers Day presentation. This is where it should not appear. Couple comments that were made specifically regarding county employee participation in the United Way Day of Hearing. The comment was made, pass this over to HR, non-board of supervisors volunteer. And isn't this an HR function? Again, this is Story County's communications plan, not just me or the county outreach. So that's definitely up to you all if you want to continue to have that listed in the communications plan or not. The next comment was made regarding Leadership Nevada and organizing and facilitating County Day. And the comment was made to remove this from the list. It's not part of the official duties. Again, looking at just my position. We are coming up to, Leadership Nevada is underway right now. County Day will be in May. And I have historically organized that and facilitated that event. So if you do remove that as a strategy, we'll have to identify someone else and how that happens. And then again, questioning the wellness initiatives, whether or not that's an HR function. Again, it's the board of supervisors, Board of Supervisors Communications Plan. No new strategies, just want to share the feedback that I did receive. Any questions on that goal? I guess, go ahead, no, go ahead, Ben.
I guess I'm a little confused. Are you saying that suggestions were that you shouldn't, you shouldn't be involved in the United Way Day of Hearing anymore? And Leadership Nevada?
Yeah.
And the wellness initiatives? Yeah, I disagree. I think, I don't see any problem with it. That's what I mean.
Well, your role is to communicate for those things, for the wellness initiative. You don't, you're not the, I mean, you would communicate the issue like you would anything else.
Right.
Communication.
And I helped put, I helped put materials together and I served on the Wellness Committee, too.
So talk to me a little bit about some that's on here. So I guess you're on the same line with those three. So like the United Way Day of Hearing, is it more or less putting it out there that, like on our website? I'm just trying to figure that out because I look at Day of Hearing as kind of, I think HR puts out, does anyone want to participate in that?
And we switched that, what, Alyssa, last year or the, oh, Alyssa?
She, she's, yeah.
Last year or the year before. Prior to that, I was responsible. My position was responsible for scheduling all of that. And that was a wonderful shift to have HR take on responsibility of that. So these are comments that have come through, through the process of reviewing communications plan. And I do have the history for like Leadership Nevada. And I think it's important that we just look at, this is a board's communications plan, not just specific to one person. And the comments that were received in these three were related to that one individual being and seen as part of my work program. It's up to the board to decide if it's on the communications plan, who's charged with that, whether it's even board members, too. But I just wanted to make sure that those comments were received and communicated.
I think it's important to leave them on the communications plan. The goal is to engage the community through service and recognition.
So can you explain to me a little bit on the Leadership Nevada? The County Day with Leadership Nevada? I know we talked about, I think we talked about this one before. I don't recall it.
There are two aspects of it. There's the Leadership Nevada Steering Committee that I have served on. I don't know, well over 15 years. I take, I do that as a citizen of Nevada. So I use my personal time to serve on that steering committee. And that was a shift because that used to be, I would use that, that would be part of my responsibilities as a county staff member. The County Day is actually the day where the Leadership Nevada participants attend, if it's a Tuesday, a board meeting, meet with all the various departments and elected officials, generally tour the jail. And that's been the highlight. I'm not sure how we will do that this year. But I am, I have served as a coordinator at that event. Working with Leadership Nevada, the facilitators, to make sure that there's a skill session that's involved. If we have to bring someone in to guide that skill session, I found that individual. Again, working with the Leadership Nevada folks to help me with that.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to think of, because AIMS has their Leadership AIMS. And I'm not sure who they have as kind of their point of contact to go, when they go, you know, city government, they, you know, or they go to all the various businesses in there. Is that someone within the city of AIMS? I know it's more of a AIMS Chamber, right, Leadership AIMS? Leadership Nevada, I don't know if it's their Nevada Chamber.
It goes through Main Street, Nevada. That's how it works. And then the steering committee is composed of representatives from the school, various organizations throughout Nevada, the hospital, the city. I kind of represent the county, but I really don't now at this point on that steering committee.
I'm just wondering, is, do you identify specific to Leadership Nevada? And I only say that because I'm not sure, but does, like Leadership AIMS, I think they usually have county supervisors come to their event. I don't know that they've actually come, you know, come here.
They do.
They do. Yeah, so they've come here.
Yeah.
Is Leadership Nevada just kind of defining it just to that community versus maybe something helping the leadership? I don't, I don't know.
Leadership programs, yeah.
The leadership programs. And that way then it's broader for whomever is kind of that county point of contact. Because I read it here and I'm thinking that's the only, that's the only program. But there are other ones and I don't know what other folks like to...
Gets hold of the chair and says, can you come be on a panel discussion?
Right, right, right. That's, that's...
And that's kind of our, yeah.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. I'm not sure if they come over and tour parts of, I think they have in the past. They've kind of toured other departments and kind of government. Are we limiting that by saying Leadership Nevada only?
So maybe change that to say facilitate, so leave off the Leadership Nevada piece and just say facilitate County Day.
County participation in leadership programs.
Yeah, yeah. Because then it's open to whoever is the most appropriate person. And we're not, you know, what if Huxley has one?
Right.
It looks like we singled out one.
What about schools?
Do like government classes come, sit in or?
We didn't say city programs. I mean, what I said was just leadership programs. Some school might have a leadership program, might fit in there.
Right. I know supervisor, former supervisor Clinton would go to Huxley and just different schools.
And the reality is, we don't need to really work this up. It may be that somebody just contacts a supervisor and says, hey, could you just come talk about the county? It doesn't have to be a, you know, if we need help with something, we say, you know, we can fall into this, this book and plan, but we don't have to, we don't have to recruit those here.
I guess I'm looking at it as when there's a group that wants to come to the county and really understand what's happening in the county and go to different departments in the county.
Yeah.
Who, like organizing that, as opposed to someone calling and saying, can you come and speak at my group?
I don't think that's generally for us to do, it's kind of like the leadership ones, it's not for us to do that outreach, per se. It's usually that government class or whatever that does the outreach. And they contact, who is the person I need to talk to to set up a tour for our class or our students or break that, break that down? Is that what you're kind of thinking? I mean, that's just kind of how I would envision, envision that.
Well, I also think that in the past 11 months, not much of this has been done. So like, just people aren't getting out to see each other face to face.
Right.
And, you know, a lot of these things, it's... Let's see how they go.
And I believe Leanna, you said this is a living document.
I did. I didn't say that, but I should have.
To make changes.
Any other questions on that? Otherwise I'll go to the last goal, which is enhancing emergency response communications. So what I've said... emergency response communications. So what I sent out, just, I should have started with this. When I sent out the spreadsheet in December to the board, it's a listing of all, all the strategies that we've tried and then divided by year. So that's where some of those that were done in the past have made their way back on here. And then there were some that were done, that we, was one and done, that we never need to do again. And that was, like specifically talking about Storycom. It was a point in time that we knew we needed to do a neural operation, so we added it to communications plan because Storycom wasn't yet founded. So that's, I should have mentioned that because that's really where you see some that were earlier iterations in earlier plan, planning documents that no longer show up. So there are, there, there is a new one here. It's a new one that's already been done once that we need to, every few years, add it back on. And as, this is, you might see a couple of these stay every year or two. And that's the last one, reviewing the Story County Comprehensive Emergency Operations Plan, ESF 15, External Affairs. That was done last year, but through the emergency management, I think it's something that, it is a living document. We need to make sure, no different than I have the right contacts from my press release list. We need to always be looking at that, especially as fast as communication channels are changing. But with that, looking at the Public Affairs Activation Checklist, this is kind of checklist that was put together that this type of disaster requires this type of response. We have just a, the EOC has operated, been activated, so we need this for the PIOs. I mean, that's what that checklist looks at. And then along with that, the Public Information, the PIO Procedures Guide. And I, Sandra King, Alyssa, and myself all serve as the Board's Public Information Officers. So we have a Procedures Guide that's still in draft format for most part, I think, although, you know, I've gone through it a few times and said, okay, that's something we can pull out. But I want to make sure that that's in here. So there's a recognition that we have to, that that's something that continues to evolve, that we need to look at. Just a couple comments that were received by members of the board on the COOP CAG, an annual review to highlight lessons learned. I am planning on sending you a schedule for us chair to get the CCMT meet involved in that. Because once we did activate it, we did start learning some great lessons learned. And then the next one is turning over the outreach campaigns for Flood Awareness Month and National Preparedness Month to Planning and Development, once that employee gets designation. I do want to comment though that I still need to be involved as the Community Rating System Coordinator. That is a designation the county has. That's not the floodplain management aspect of it. That's the outreach aspect and the tie to flood insurance. So a lot of those flyers and documents you still see, those go through, through kind of the Board of Supervisors Office rather than Planning and Development. So that, but again, it's still a county communications plan. And then same with the reviewing, updating the PPI. That's part of our Community Rating System Program. There was a lot to that. There really, I didn't know another way to do it than work through it with each of you, especially given that we have a new board member and then I wanted to reflect and make sure I shared former board member comments. Are there any questions for me?
Yeah, question? There's something you mentioned yesterday. You're going to bring.
Yeah. So I think one thing too is looking at just kind of consistency of, I think part of it goes with what we've had is, is just notifications to the public, you know, and I can just give an example, like Board of Health has a ordinance that they're looking at. And I, it's just consistency when people are uploading their agendas. I think we need to kind of look at that. And then just also when it's going out on social media, so that folks have enough time to see that it is out there. I know, I saw it yesterday. I'm not sure when you posted it, Leanna, for example, was, I saw it at like 4:30 in the afternoon.
I posted it like 2 o'clock. They asked me to post it like mid morning yesterday morning.
Yeah.
I just, I had.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand your schedule. You're busy. I'm not, I'm not targeting you for anything.
No, that is.
But I'm just saying, it's consistency of, okay, if, if we've got, you know, something big for a topic that we know is on there, different departments then need to notify earlier so that we can get up. And I think that's just where the consistency needs to, to come up. I'm not targeting Board of Health either. I just gave that as an example, just because that's on there today.
It's very recent. And I mean, unfortunately, that's.
The reason they're coming up. But I don't think there's consistency among other, other areas to get that information out so that the public can see it to know, oh gosh, this is going on, especially if they're not looking at their website, if not their mode to find out what's going on with us. They might not use Twitter, but hey, they use Facebook and they want to participate. I'm just, how can we do that better? Just get that notification out better?
Is there a way through the website to like have it trigger anytime an agenda or something like that gets posted to the website?
But you'd almost need it so that goes specifically to the, the topic it can't, you know? It's, and that's where I'm kind of going. It's, it's not just going to, you know, like the Story County page in general, but going to, oh gosh, there's an ordinance for a proposal discussion that's going to be maybe more hotly contested potential, that when you click on that on Facebook, it opens up right up to that. So you don't have to scroll through to find out what that is. But it's, it's not only that, it is just the different departments getting the information earlier so that you have time. I know your time is very busy so that you have the time as well.
And to make sure that the, because in that case, in that particular instance, by the time I did get to post it, I think there was even a delay, something went with Hootsuite that I had to, I didn't know it not posted. So I went back and reposted it. And so just to allow for those types of, what else?
Well, that, and then like I said, I had an issue with the, the, okay, you want to make comments.
It doesn't work.
When I clicked on it, it took me to an error page. So it was just different things that we would have made cut earlier, would have made cut earlier. I'm not sitting on my Facebook all day long or whatever by any means. So I just happened to take a look and saw it at like 4:30 in the afternoon and I clicked on it and it's like, oh, okay.
What I can do, I can start putting together a standard operating procedure kind of approach and then share that with elected officials and department heads at maybe one of our upcoming meetings and just say, you know, I am more than happy to present the information, but at least 48 hours in advance, not, or if it's a Friday, you know, we try to do things timely, like job postings and fabulous, or fee like cap of the week, early in the week, so people have time to digest that and have before. Now, those are bad because you don't provide comments on that. But at least if I miss something, I can go back and put it out there. Like the, the COVID vaccinations were, I'm trying to get that, we'll get that weekly now from, from Mary Greeley and provide that information on a timely basis. Yeah, I mean, I, I agree.
Yeah. It's just something that, just in general for us to be cognizant of. Because if we want people to know what's going on in Story County, it's kind of hard when they find out an hour, a couple hours ahead of time or after the fact. And that's, along with our broader challenges of, folks are going to technology, but I'm not quite sure what all technology locations they're going to.
We made a good comment on the broadband study called We're On The Other Day. And they were saying, we wanted the survey out. And I said, how do you do, how are you going to do that, you know, how, you know, using technology and when people have limited use of technology? And they made the point that in rural areas, you know, people may not have, you know, fiber, may not have, you know, any, even satellite, but almost everybody, I mean, Facebook is becoming ubiquitous because you see it on your phone. You can get it on your phone, you're using data, but, but that they thought Facebook was about the best way to get hold of people who were otherwise challenged in terms of their technology resources. So I think anything we can do, and using more Twitter and Instagram, but you know, anything we can do on our Facebook page and get easier to use, I think.
And it's different demographics based on, the social platform basis, based on different demographics and users.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just don't tell me, have TikTok.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I can add something to that.
Yeah, I'm not quite, quite sure how you want to lay that out, but I just, I just noticed that seems to be a little bit of a challenge or something that we need to figure out. How can we do that more consistently and easier?
And gained to your question on whether or not, once like agendas are published, if they can go right to our social media. We have disabled that. It was going through an RSS feed, but it wasn't working. It wasn't being consistent and not sending the, and Civic Plus did not have a good solution. So our solution was, we need to cut it because it was posting very outdated information sometimes as the most recent agenda. And we did that, what, a year ago, I think?
I remember you doing that, or whatever that was the challenge, is that if you had a, was it a reminder?
Yeah.
Thing that if you updated the agenda, you weren't getting the most recent one, you were getting the older version. And it was not reading the newest version.
Well, hopefully with the refresh, they fixed that.
We, we hope. There are a lot of things I think when we get to refresh, we'll be, we'll be happy with. So I will, I'll draft up some language to get to that point on consistency and timeliness to postings and stuff. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. My next steps then are to post it online then to, once I make the changes.
Okay.
To the general public.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Oh, and a definite consideration. So I think I moved the, except the, sorry, the communications plan with the changes and.
Second. Then moved in second to approve the 2021 communications plan with said changes. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Seddon's aye. Next we have gone here, departmental reports, community services.
Good afternoon, Paula. Good afternoon, board. Can you hear me okay?
I can. Thank you for hanging on so long today.
You bet. I didn't know, I thought I'd start off, see if you guys had any questions on the report. I do have a couple of updates I could share regarding some of the information in the report. Do you want me just to share those updates?
Share the update, yep.
Okay. So for CICS, I had noted in there what we had expended with the first round of CARES Act funds. And then that funding period was extended to 630 of 21. So we are sitting with about 1.9 million in CARES funds. Our administrative team met last week and we visited with our, the CICS governing board last week as well. What we're planning to do at this time is retain about 155,000 of the CARES dollars to do some additional projects that we have identified working on through the next six months. And then we are looking at sending 1.75 million to Polk County again, if they are interested in that. We were looking at doing that last December. And then we retained the funds when we heard that, that the extension may be coming. So, but at this time, we are identifying as sending again that 1.75 to them. With the CARES dollars, as you know, they are specific that it needs to be COVID-19 related and MHDs related. What we would like to look at is some potential projects with our ending fund balance that we wouldn't necessarily have those restrictions on it as what the CARES dollars do. So, so that is something that we're going to be taking a look at. But I just wanted to let you know right now, that's what our plan is for the, for the CARES dollars. The other thing, I believe I did forward on to you after the governing board meeting last week, that the board did approve the levy rate of 2220. The board does intend to meet at the end of February to take a look at that and discuss whether or not, we're waiting to see if the legislature will extend the deadline on the ending fund balance of 40%. So if the legislature does extend that, push that back a year, then I think we're okay at the 2220. If that does not happen, then I think we would be looking at counties levying at their public hearing at the 1475 per capita. So there will be more to come on that at the end of February, just, but I just wanted to mention that to you. I know that's something we talked about in our budget work session also. So those are the two things I wanted to touch base on. Do you guys have any questions?
I do have a question. So do you have an idea when Mary Greeley will be up and running with their Subacute?
So they are targeting June for that. I believe, I want to say June, it could have been the end of May, somewhere in that timeframe. I haven't, I haven't received a, a hard date from Christie yet. One of the things that they're working on is bringing staff on board. And then the staff also have to go through a medication management course. So I know Christie's working with DMAC on that to get that set up. I think it's like a 50-hour course that the staff will need to go through. And so, and then they're working on the certification and everything as well, or the licensure.
Okay. Any other questions? No? No. Well, thank you, Carla. You did a nice thorough report and thanks for the additional information.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a good rest of your day.
Thanks.
Thanks. To other reports, TIF update. Lisa Mark, please.
Please unmute herself.
I got it. Star nine, star six. I don't know what I need to do.
That's my confusion.
Linda, Linda had asked me a couple weeks ago if I would, would bring forward some information for you guys when it comes to the TIF projections. Lucy's in there too, I hope, because Lucy is my, my TIF master. But I just wanted to do a brief overview going forward of where we're at. I gave you a projection. What it is, is the, if, if you determine that you're going to take the 50% for, for your economic development, this is what it, the projections could look like. Obviously revenues are projection because they're based on what we, what the levies are on the entities that are TIF'd in the county. So those are always just projections. I think the important part for you is the borrowed debt, which is listed there at the, or lower part of it says what we borrowed for and when it pays off. Okay? So to see now, the TIF does sunset after 20 years. So it goes all the way through 32. You do not have to access the dollars. It's not, it's your decision. In November of 2011, it actually was the November 10th board meeting, you acted upon FY22 projects. So this shows what you've projected, or what we've projected for FY22. So if there's any questions, Lucy or I were glad to help or answer.
So the 400,000 that's still left for the TIL is included in here?
The 400,000, no. That has nothing to do with it.
So the 400,000 that's still left for the TELC is included in here?
The 400,000, no, that has nothing to do with it. No, the, the TELC project, we borrowed three, or $4 million total for the TELC project. The dollars that he is talking about, the 500,000 that he's saying is left after he gets done with the project, is in the capital project TIF fund because that's where the dollars were deposited, but they were grant repayments and/or unplanned reimbursements that, that were deposited in there. This is totally and entirely TIF dollars we're looking at right here.
I want to make sure supervisor Mark, do you have another question? Okay. All right. Thank you, Lisa.
Yep.
All right, next, on the agenda.
You can add anything?
No, I was just curious, in case you had several questions, but I think I answered those.
I think you did. I asked it the other day, I think, you know, what, what are our parameters in using these TIF dollars?
And they're pretty broad. You can also develop that as a very broad brush. And then public infrastructure is, is also allowed, which would include public buildings like fire stations or swimming pools or city walls, things like that.
Okay. So, so what I'm hearing you say is there's probably lots of things in our capital improvement plan that we could utilize TIF dollars for.
Yeah, no, I have not gone through that, or, and I mean, Leanne has probably looked at some of those as well. But yeah, that, that's a, we would need to look at the particular project.
Okay, thank you.
And just if I may coordinate the timing of that, because that would require meeting the plan, certifying that, so the county auditorium would be sent first.
Right.
That's why we have fall program.
We have a fall recovery renewal process.
And that's even for county projects. County projects, as you know, with Dakin's Lake paving of 590th, the bike lane south of town here in Nevada.
Yeah, that was, they had the, the road.
Yeah, those all, they have to be, and TELC specifically mentioned in the plan on that, adopted.
And when we start to discuss that, September?
I actually will be coming to you here, probably towards the end of the month, if you schedule, because there's a mandatory consultation, or mandatory meeting with potential applicants that we tried to use through earlier in the spring, so that they have time to build through their budgets. I can bring that to you anytime.
Next, Leanne, it looks like we have given for us again for discussion and direction on the capital improvement plans, the CIP and public review process.
Just a couple of questions, or a couple of comments of changes since you finished your work sessions. And thank you to Lisa, if she's still on the phone or on the call, for getting me these. The study that was proposed by conservation, as you know, is removed, and that was going to be donated funds, so that's not in here. And then on page 11 and page 12, the amount for the Dakin's Lake playground upgrade has been reduced down to 46,500 as to opposed, I think it was 50,000 for the budget work sessions. And then the Peterson Park beach area improvements on the top of page 12, again, is 46,500. So those are the three changes. I know the comment was made when we saw this early on, if with all the past projects that you see on page six and seven, if I can start adding in the, when they were approved amounts, I would ask that we start after this iteration next year, because there's some layout challenges with that, to be honest, that I'd like to play around with a little bit, and some historical information and timing to get that together. But I can, I can look at that going forward. Are there any questions on what's before you with the plan?
I don't have any.
Maybe the plan, the next steps, I should have everything ready to be released tomorrow afternoon, including a form for online comments on our website. I'll do a press release, it will do a news flash on our website, it will actually show up under the board supervisors as well, your page on the website, and then of course, social media postings. In the past, we have sent hard copies of the comment sheet and CIP to city halls and libraries. I think I have an opportunity to do that with the mailing the annual report too, but that may not be till next week. So this would be out there for public comment for like five weeks, and I'll bring it, bring it back as public comment to you. And then if you did receive any public comment, I would appreciate if you could forward that to me too, so I can capture it.
How much do we usually get?
So you've already received a public comment, and that's the only public comment we've ever received?
Yeah, I remember seeing that, it was by cap ratio, yeah. That's the only time we've ever received a public comment. We need to send it out weekly for public comment?
Yep, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, so the question is, are folks not engaged to do it, or are folks not, again, it's, it's where are they looking for their news? Are they not seeing it? Yeah, or is it not an issue till they see, you know, a project going up or, or being completed, and then they're like, well, yeah, yeah.
So they spend all that money?
Yeah.
Is there, you know, I'm just going to bring this up. Is there a better format for this reporting? It takes a lot of pages, a lot of scrolling, about a third of the page is taken over on the left by a, a area that's got nothing in it, and I'm just wondering if it can be, if it's.
We could. A former board gave direction to have all of our documents be consistent with the C2C plan. That's why you see this format, along with the communications plan, in this format. Part of the stylistic approach from the former board.
Sure, sure.
And what I've done in the past, we've used some online mapping to put it out there graphically with GIS, and I can talk to Matt Boykin, see if we can do that again. That will require, I don't know that that can get done, it won't be done by tomorrow to do that, but.
Sure.
We can do that, Lisa.
Online mapping?
What?
What do you mean, online mapping?
It's called a story map, and what it is, it has, you could go to Map of Story County and see a dot, like a pin, and you could click on that pin. So it's a visual element rather than the words on a page, a more interactive experience. But it's, that relies on people going to our website or seeing on social media, and that's why we send it to the, to the city halls and libraries too, paper copy. And any strategies to get public input? Obviously I talked about on the radio show too.
I think there's a lot of randomness in here, it's good history, but it like, I mean, quite frankly, for me, it's like, I get lost in it all. It, it, it seems like if you're going to get people to comment on it, you have to, it should be a simpler document in all ways. I mean, it takes, it's, it takes quite a bit of commitment for somebody who doesn't know this stuff, to scroll through the whole thing, to read the introduction, to read a bunch of stuff. And maybe, as an example, some of the stuff could be in an appendix, or the list of projects could be at the end rather than beginning, because your, your, people are going through, scrolling through seven pages before they even get to what we're doing this year. And they're, it's to page nine or page 10, wait, the things that are proposed, you know, the things we want, we want people to comment on, they don't get to until they, they do love it. It's, it's not a friendly document for some, if you're asking if you, if you want input from people. I mean, it, it takes too much commitment. That's why I keep that on it.
I am a wonder, and this, I, yeah, I don't know if you could do it, probably for this year, or look at it for next year, because that is where I'm kind of thinking of it as well. I agree, if there's a lot to it, and it's, you know, I look at the projects, was it, this year 23 is four pages of projects. Is there like a way to just do it on like an Excel sheet of, okay, here's, you know, condense it down so people are looking at one page?
I asked for an Excel spreadsheet last year. Oh.
No, there, there is one. I mean, I think I sent that out early. Yeah, we have an Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering if, if that would, I don't know, I mean, it's, will that get people to look at it more, to make comment?
If you want to just focus on this current fiscal year, next fiscal year, I can do some, some other approaches to get those out there. Again, keeping in mind, this is a, a planning document, so.
Right.
It is dry, I mean, it's not.
Right.
Maybe there could be like a project snapshot.
Yeah.
That someone could look at. They don't want to read the whole plan, they want to know what's coming up in the next fiscal year, or what projects are happening now.
Maybe what would make it easier too, because I know we've got deduction process definitions and projects, maybe something to say, projects for fiscal year 2021 are on pages, you know, seven to nine, 23, you know, just something like that, so that somebody want to go through everything he has done, which I think is good historical information. But if they want to go directly to, okay, I want to find out what projects is the county looking to do for fiscal year 22, I need to go to, you start on page 11 through 14 is, or whatever, 11 through 13 is for fiscal year 22, when fiscal year 23, so more details, look to those pages for more details, but then they're, they know, they can go right to that, because someone might want to skip those first 11 pages, but they want to know. And you got to make things easy for people. I mean, folks are not going to want to scroll through, they're going to want to go directly to, what, what are you doing with my tax dollars?
And I still say, could put like, you know, the history of what happened, put it in the appendix, don't leave what it, it's, it's a, yeah, thank audience. And in, and quite frankly, one of my reasons of not liking the format is it takes so many pages, and people will look at it and say, oh my gosh, I'm on page three of 25. I think that's, I think that's, I think the length of it is a turn off, and most, and a third of the length is formatting.
If, if the board, if this current board wants to abandon the layout, there's no, again, it was, it was based on consistency with, because this is tied to, it needs to be tied to our, our C2C plan, and to continue the messaging of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Not everybody's going to look at all the documents, you know? Not everybody's going to say, oh, that's really nice that it's the same. I mean, maybe five people in the county are going to notice that, and we're four of them, or maybe we're five, you know? It's, 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 if, if the format becomes an impediment in any way to getting people to look at it and see it as a friendly document, and I think 25 pages is way too long.
Well, I have your blessing. I'll be glad over the next few days to do some changes and bring it back, and we can release it then next week, and delay it a week.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't know that why we couldn't wait a week. I know you're busy, but I think, again, if we can make it as easy as possible.
I kind of feel like we're having two, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
Two, two conversations at the same time, though. I mean, it's a planning document, so if there's a way to take out the most interesting part of that and put it, like, just put it in an easily accessible place with then a link or direction to where do you find the whole plan, so that we, we keep the content of the whole document, but we can shrink down that most important part that we think people might be looking for. I'm on board with changing the format.
I think what the challenge comes in is, you put it out there for public comment for five weeks. If you want to make, make it as easily accessible and as much information for the public to see, well, what are your plans for the next year, five, five years, potential plans? You, you want to have that out there, because, gosh, I might be looking at, are you going to be paving that road by my, by my home and all? Oh, okay, that's three years down the road, you know, so what's, what's important to you might not be the same priority importance to me. So that's where I think of one thing, but I do think if there's, even just, just, yeah, there's some formatting or something to just make it a little bit easier, because I think it's right, if you're looking at six or eight pages or whatever, just getting to the information, and you're not getting to what project you're going to do right now.
Introduction process and definitions can be shortened slightly, probably go on one page.
An executive summary, it sounds like that's what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's the introduction then.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, and then if somebody looks at it, says, oh, this is just introduction, I don't want to read that, they go to the next page, and they're actually getting into, here's what we're doing this year. Then they go and then have a, a page for each year.
I agree, strong. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just, I think people want to know it, I think it's good information. 25 pages is a lot to, to look through, and what can I just do kind of at a glance?
Anything else, Leanne, that give you some direction? Just, then I'll come back next week and we won't release it this week.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Moving on, upcoming agenda items, I can think of one right now is the CIP plan, the revised CIP plan, so I've kind of took that out there, I don't know if there's any additional, I didn't hear of any additional upcoming agenda items. Well, I suppose a potential might be if there is any, anything based on your asset conversations, standards that might have to come before the boards. I'm saying an upcoming agenda item could potentially be if there's any changes after your, your conversation with the asset team, if anything would need to come before the board, or not.
Well, the asset comes before you.
Right, oh, okay, would come before you anyways, okay. All right, moving on, public forum number two, this is the time for the public to make comments on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of open meeting law, but may do so in future. Open up public comment. If you're anyone who'd like to make a comment, raise your hand, or click star nine. Looks like there is none, so I will close public comment number two. Liaison assignments, committee meetings, updates, announcements from supervisors. Supervisor Basil, do you want to start?
Sure. We've got the, on Wednesday, secondary roads fund.
We've got the, on Wednesday, secondary roads fund, distribution committee meeting, and joint board supervisors and planning and zoning committee meeting to discuss the work plan. Thursday, I have an alternative stress diversion meeting. And next Monday, I have Story County opioid task force meeting, Story County juvenile justice committee, and a boost on Monday.
Supervisor Merkin? Darren, about the secondary roads fund distribution committee. And we don't have a vote on that.
Okay.
There's about five or six supervisors around the state that are on this committee. I emailed somebody, but I thought, since I was on some of the, some of the roads and transportation committees, I'd sit in on it. And I know anything about it, I will know. I knew I was on some committee with DOT, and I was hoping this wasn't it, but I wanted to check, and I'm not on this one. I'm going to, on Wednesday, there's a voluntary annexation meeting on parcel of 4514 Hyde Avenue, and I volunteered to sit in on that for the county. I don't think there's any huge deals on that, it's voluntary. And there's some, several meetings on Monday. I've got a conservation board meeting Monday night. I'm not sure about some of the other ones I might sit in on. Mostly working on projects this week. I had Waters, the BMA, the broadband committee, those issues, trying to get some things going on. That's all I got.
So I have Board of Health this afternoon at 2:00. Tomorrow, like, you know, the employee recognition and then the joint board of supervisors and planning and zoning meeting. I have on my calendar for the jurisdictional meeting Thursday evening, assessor's office Friday morning are the other things that I have on my calendar. That's it.
Assessor's office.
Yeah, although I have eight, but I think it's 8:30, isn't it? I can double check with.
Got eight.
Okay, then maybe it's a bit caught. All right, with that, their motion to adjourn.
Still move.
Second. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
We are adjourned.